Good morning. We have a council quorum. As soon as we can get everybody on this side of the dais, we will get started with this meeting. A couple of councilmembers are in the back and they'll be out in a minute. All right, we have a quorum, so we're going to get started. We'll go to the labor update. Jennifer?
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Jennifer Shembry, Deputy Director of Employee Relations. As you know, we are underway with negotiations with almost all of our bargaining units, and proposals and tentative agreements that are reached are posted on the city's Labor Relations website. On Tuesday mornings, we're going to be presenting significant proposals that are received the week prior to that. And today, we have three proposals in front of you, received from OE3, our AFSMI unions, MEFN CEO, and AEA. The OE3 proposal is the one that does not have OE3's name at the top. That proposal is to restore wages and benefits to 2009 levels, and that includes the 10% total compensation reduction. The proposal from AFSMI included the city's proposal to increase the top of the range by 2.5% in each year, but did not have the contingencies that were in the city's proposal. They also proposed a 2% general wage increase in the first year. And then the proposal from AEA increased the premium pay that they have for certifications from .25% to 2.5%. Again, all of these proposals and any other proposals that are exchanged at the table, as well as tentative agreements reached, are posted on the city's Labor Relations website. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. We have no requests to speak, so we're going to adjourn into closed session. We will return at 1:30. San Jose City Council meeting to order for April 23, 2013. We'll introduce the indicator. Councilmember Chu will take that.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to introduce Executive Pastor of Ministry, Felipe Santos from South Bay Church. Established in 2009 in Santa Clara, a South Bay church moved to San Jose and has operated on Murphy Road in District 4 since last year. South Bay Church is an interdenominational church started by six friends. These families moved from different places around the country with a desire and vision to impact the Bay Area. In serving the community, South Bay Church is committed to participate in the Beautiful Day, which is an initiative led by churches and community organizations with the goal to spread compassion and transfer our cities. They will volunteer on a beautification project at Vinsey Park Elementary School, next to the Vinsey Park Park, on Sunday, April 28, where they will deep plain the campus with trash pickup, dust the area, and paint where it is needed. They will also reorganize the library, classroom, multipurpose room, and teacher's lounge. They hope to blast the school and leave Vinsey Park with a brighter and cleaner learning environmental for students and staff. Today, we're honored to have Pastor Santos to lead the invocation. Pastor Santos was born and raised in San Paulo, Brazil, and first came to the United States at age of 11. In 1999, he moved to South Carolina to study theology at Charleston Southern University. Pastor Santos served as a collegiate ministry pastor at Northwood Church in Charleston and moved to the Bay Area in 2008 to help start the South Bay Church. He currently oversees ministries and work to equip people to lead small groups, volunteer teams, and outreach to the community. Please welcome Pastor Felipe Santos.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you, to represent you, to do good in our community. I pray for your blessing over this meeting. We ask that you would direct our thoughts, that you would unify our hearts, that the decisions that are made are consistent with your will, that it will be for the better good of the people in this community. We thank you for the privilege of public service, and we pray for your blessing, your favor, in the name of Jesus, in this meeting. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Santos. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be assisted today by John Muir Elementary School, third graders from District 1. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, John Muir Elementary School. First item of business are the orders of the day. I have no requests for changes from the printed agenda. You have a motion to approve orders of the day. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed? Orders are approved. Closed session report. City Attorney?
I have no report. City Manager, I think, does.
Yes, we're going to take the City Manager's report here as part of the closed session report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm very pleased to announce that this morning, the Mayor and City Council ratified my appointment of Jill Bourne as Director of the San Jose Public Library System. Jill is in the audience, but as I'm saying a few things, I will want her at the end to come up and address the council and the community that is here with us today. Jill comes to us from San Francisco Public Library, where she has been Deputy City Librarian since 2006. In that role, she has shared oversight of public services at the system's main library and its 27 branch libraries. In San Francisco, Jill has led programs and services that enhance public library services, including expanded public hours, capital improvements, partnerships, public technology, and innovative literary and arts programming. Known as a rising leader in the library community, Jill was named as a library journal mover and shaker in 2009 and a top innovator by the Urban Libraries Council in 2010. Prior to joining San Francisco Public, Jill was with the Seattle Public Library System for about 10 years and served as their Assistant Director during those five of those 10 years. This is a very important and key appointment for our community, our staff, our partners, and our neighborhoods, and so finding the ideal candidate for our system was very, very important to me. We conducted an extensive search, and we did find the right candidate who meets all of the qualities of what we're looking for for our public library system, which, as you all know, is nationally recognized. Our process was very significant, including outreach to our staff, our partners, and community leaders to make sure that we understood the priorities for our next library director. And so I'm confident that Jill has the skills, experience, leadership, and commitment that we need to carry our system well into the future, and so I look forward to her joining our team in July. So, in helping me to congratulate Jill, I'd also like to express my deep gratitude to Ann Kane, who has served as our interim director for about a year now. Ann has done a wonderful job to keep our libraries and our staff moving forward during this very, very difficult period of transition. On her watch, we've successfully opened two new branch libraries already this year, and we're well on our way to opening two more branches by June. And so also, on behalf of our staff, and our visitors, and our partners, I'd like to thank Ann for her steady leadership in helping us during this time. So with that, Jill Bourne.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to join the San Jose Public Library, which is a library that is known for both its innovative spirit and its unique commitment to serving its diverse communities. I look forward to building on what's already a strong foundation, a very strong team in place, and also working with the community to develop a future vision for this library as centers of learning, growth, and also engagement for the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jill.
We'll now take up the ceremonial items. I'd like to start by inviting Councilwoman Camus to join me at the podium. Today, we're presenting a commendation to the Assistance League of San Jose. Councilwoman Camus will have some more to say about that, and I think there's some folks here on this item. Please come on down.
It's my pleasure to honor the Assistance League of San Jose today, and at 30 years of service to our community. Their chapter started in 1983. It's an all-volunteer organization made up of over 125 local members. They work in various projects throughout San Jose. Members volunteered more than 17,000 hours in the last fiscal year, and they participated in eight philanthropic programs that serve the community, programs that include Operation Bell, which is a assist... The Assistance League gave uniforms to 3,900 low-income students in 37 schools in three districts. The Senior Bingo, Assist a Shelter program, Hug a Bear, to give stuffed teddy bears to agencies to ease the trauma of children in accident or abuse situations, Carrying Hands, to crochet and donate caps for chemotherapy patients treated in a Valley Medical Center. So I want to thank them so much for everything they've done for our youth, our seniors, and I wanted to invite Rachel Hackett to come up here and receive our award. Mayor, can you... Thank you. Want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Camus. It's my pleasure to accept this commendation on behalf of the Assistance League of San Jose. We are a small but mighty group of all-volunteer women, and we have a common goal of providing camaraderie to each other, but we have a much larger goal of giving back to the community. And through our programs, which were just... Some of them were just highlighted, we do help children, underserved children, and seniors, and families in the San Jose area. And I really would like to acknowledge that we are very grateful for this acknowledgement by the City Council and by the Mayor, and so thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Herrera to join me at the podium. We present a proclamation declaring April 26 as World Intellectual Property Day. Councilmember Herrera has the details.
Thank you, Mayor. And joining me here today is Kim Van Voorhees, her colleague Stefan Spada, and Kimson John Roderick. On April 26, every year, World Intellectual Property Day is celebrated in order to promote discussion of the role of intellectual property in encouraging innovation and creativity. This year, the city of San Jose partnered with the American Intellectual Property Law Association Silicon Valley Chapter and the World Intellectual Property Organization, WIPo, a UN agency based in Geneva, to produce the first Silicon Valley World IP Day. This event on Friday, April 26, will be held at the San Jose Museum of Art. This year's theme is Creativity, the Next Generation. Intellectual property, IP, refers to creations of the mind, inventions, literary and artistic works, symbols, names, images, and designs used in commerce. For us here in San Jose, the capital of Silicon Valley, it means that we have a lot of very smart people who invent lots of stuff, especially technology-related, and to protect their right of ownership, these individuals and companies file patents. We can be very proud that San Jose is the number-one producer of patents in the nation. This is the first and only World IP Day celebration on the West Coast, and we're excited to be part of this very important event. It's interesting to note, in celebration of the new partnerships with the city of San Jose, the American Intellectual Property Law Association, and the WIPo, we have invited Kim Van Voorhees, board member of the American Intellectual Property Law Association, to accept this proclamation, which proclaims April 26, 2013, as World Intellectual Property Day in the city of San Jose. And as I said, Kim's joined by her colleague Stefan Spada and her son John Roderick, who in the future may be contributing to the IP. Mayor Reed, please present the proclamation to Ms. Van Voorhees, and Kim will probably want to come and say a few words after we get a picture.
So, on behalf of the American Intellectual Property Law Association, the World Intellectual Property Organization, and the United States Patent and Trademark Office, I would like to thank Mayor Reed and the city of San Jose very much for all of their tremendous support for the World IP Day celebration. It would not be possible without the support of the city. I'd also like to thank the city for recognizing the importance of intellectual property, not only to ourselves, but to our community. It's a tremendous asset for us here in the Silicon Valley, and I thank the city so much for recognizing that. The World IP Day celebration, as Councilmember Herrera mentioned, this is our first one here in San Jose and on the West Coast. It's happening this Friday at the San Jose Museum of Art. We would love everyone to attend, and we have a tremendous lineup of speakers. We have individuals from the World Intellectual Property Organization. We have the new director of our soon-to-be Silicon Valley Patent Office, and we have some very cool inventors, and we will also have some equally cool gadgets and things to play with at the exhibitor fair. So I hope you all can make it, and thank you again to the city of San Jose.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
And I have one more thing. Today is my son's birthday, so happy birthday, John.
Happy birthday.
Any items councilmembers would like to pull up for discussion? Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor.
I have no requests from the public to speak on the consent calendar. There's a motion on the balance. I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. On that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? No. In numerical order, the first one would be 2.3B. Councilmember Rocha, I want to speak to that one.
Thank you, Mayor. The minutes of the Rules Committee, and I was looking at Page 3, Item G4. This is the direction that I had requested the Rules Committee and staff to look at in terms of facilitating communication with the city retirees regarding discussions that may affect the retirees, and as part of our negotiations on whether it's retiree healthcare, pension reform. I was curious as to the status of that. I hadn't received any updates on that matter, and maybe there isn't generally any updates to speak of at this point?
There may be, but I just don't know off the top of my head. I know we have been in correspondence, but let me follow up, councilmember, and we'll send out an infomemo.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I've moved to accept the Rules Minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 12, Rules Committee report. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. 2.14 would be the next one. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. I had a question as to the length of the agreement, and I think it's four-year term. And is that standard practice for the appointees?
That's the charter requirement.
Okay. That was it? Thank you. Move to accept... Or, I'm sorry, move... What was the recommendation on this?
2.14 is the appointment of the auditor in a compensation package.
Yes, so I move to accept the appointment and compensation package as stands.
Right, Councilmember Liccardo.
Just a question, I guess. I know there's been some prior discussion before about compensation, and, you know, this is one area where we routinely do evaluations on the council. Is it... Is there an opportunity for us to start to tie the compensation to the evaluations that we do in closed session? I know Councilwoman Constance suggested something similar, and is this a time for us to start to head down that path, so at least we can sort of lead by example in the direction that we're hoping to go, I think, in the city, where it's possible to do so of performance-based compensation?
There have been a variety of ways that the compensation has been handled since I've been on the council and as mayor, and it's usually a lot easier when you have money and you're dealing with compensation issues. So the last couple of years, we haven't had reason to do very much, and so there's several ways that it's been done. This is just the ad hoc way, because we're not dealing with all the appointees, it's the individual, because this particular term is coming to a close, and we had to deal with it. But we have, in the past, been as organized as setting pay ranges in advance, depending upon the performance review, and then doing a performance review and pegging those numbers to pay. There's no right or wrong way to do it, I suppose, but it didn't seem to be much of an issue the last couple of years, just because we weren't giving anybody raises.
Yeah, understood, and certainly no need to go through all the work if we're not going to be... If we don't have the opportunity of raises. I would offer it for further consideration as we're moving through the next fiscal year, and I would be quite willing to support and effort, and I think it might add some additional sense of importance to the evaluations that we're giving as well, that how seriously we take them and understanding what the implications are for those evaluations. And so I offer that as a suggestion and hope that when we turn the next evaluation of appointees, we can implement something similar.
Okay. Suggestion taken. I think what I would do is I'd like to start with talking to the city manager, and so I could understand the management pay performance program that we have for generally a lot of people in the city. I think that may be a way to begin the analysis. Okay. There was a motion to approve the recommendation. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. That concludes the consent calendar. Yes. Item 3.3 is our next item. Those are actions related to the business tax exemption processing fee. We've had quite a few discussions about this topic from a variety of angles at the Rules and No-Print Government Committee, as well as the council. The staff will make a presentation, so we can remember where we are and how we got started and where we're headed on this. Julia Cooper will take the lead, I believe.
Yes, we can make a presentation, or we can just be available for questions. We do have a couple of slides. It's...
Actually, go ahead and do the slides.
Okay.
There's been a lot of public interest in this. I think the slides will be helpful.
Okay. So, I'm just going to bring it up there for us. Okay. We just have a couple of slides here. As you're aware, we're in the middle of a business tax amnesty program, and we administer the business tax program within the broad definition of a business under the San Jose Municipal Code. Our amnesty program currently runs through the end of May, May 31, and the amnesty program will forgive long-term past due penalties and interest when businesses come forward and pay those for the current year and up to three prior years. And we also currently have a business tax exemption fee in place. At the Rules Committee meeting in January, there were some questions asked regarding us to review the fee and look at possibly eliminating or reducing it. We have implemented some processing changes in February. The current fee is $38 a year, and there are approximately 8,000 exempt businesses in San Jose that are paying that fee. The proposal and recommendation before you today is to eliminate the fee beginning June 1 of this year. It would never registered businesses and self-employed individuals would pay the fee, and it would be up to $148 for four years. That'd be three years prior in the current year, so they would need to essentially come up to current under the amnesty program. And then after June 1, there would be no fee involved at all. We would... We are going to require that new businesses and self-employed individuals, meeting an exemption category, register initially and then annually certify their exemption status, but they won't pay a fee. So we'll send them a piece of paper and ask them to answer a couple of questions, and then keep them in our system, so we can keep track of the businesses and the type of businesses that are here in San Jose. So, in summary, we do implement the business tax in accordance with our municipal code. We're not recommending any new exemption categories. We eliminate the fee on a prospective basis, and anybody who hasn't paid the fee in the past will need to come up to date on a retrospective basis, hopefully during this amnesty program. The amnesty program results to date, nearly 3,000 businesses have come forward that are in this exemption category, and they represent a broad array of businesses, landscapers, gardeners, house cleaners. And so we are seeing that our amnesty program is working with respect to outreach. So, and failure to comply during the amnesty period will result in a business tax assessment or a collection effort. So we're hoping we have about 24,000 postcards that we're scheduled to send out in the next couple of weeks as our one last push to get people to comply, but the program is being successful. So with that, the recommendation today is to amend the fees and charges resolution to eliminate the exemption fee effective as of June 1. So with that, we're available for any questions.
Councilwoman Constance?
Not really a question, just a comment and thanks, because I know this was a difficult process we went through. There was a lot of communications, not only from small business owners throughout the city, but also from a lot of us here on the dais, trying to really understand what the impacts were, and of course, all the work at Rules Committee. I think this is a good direction. You know, we had the licensed processing fee initially that got changed to, and we went to an exemption fee, and I think I was one of two, I think, people who didn't agree with it originally when we did it. But I think it's a good move that we're doing to get rid of it for a number of reasons. More importantly, to support the small businesses, and I'm glad that we'll have the annual check-in, because hopefully every one of those small businesses turn into medium-sized businesses, and then perhaps large businesses, and then they should be happy when they have to pay the fee, because that means they'll be doing much better than they were doing in the years they were exempted. So I think this is a good move in the right direction, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Right. You have a motion to approve the recommendation. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. Question on the retroactive waiver of the... Of those that are outstanding and the discussion around that. There was some direction, I guess, at rules that gave to move this way, to not provide that waiver, I guess, of all the fees in the past that are still outstanding. Can you talk a little bit about your approach to what you saw as maybe carving out specific, let's say, the ones that qualify for the hardship, for example? The teachers and all those ones, maybe carving those out of those outstanding ones?
I think we looked at it from a perspective in terms of trying to draw a distinction between what businesses should and shouldn't pay, so just looking at exempting the... Eliminating the exemption fee on a going-forward basis. If we were to do any kind of retroactive, it would need... We feel that it would need to be done kind of unilaterally against everybody in that category, and going back through the period of time that the amnesty period covers would be about $1 million in potential lost revenue in terms of refunding those fees. So we thought, looking at it on a prospective basis and eliminating it, was the best kind of policy move to recommend.
So the... Thank you. So the definition of teacher within the exemption category, not really specific that teacher could qualify, whether they're credentialed or not, as I understand it? could qualify, whether they're credentialed or not, as I understand it?
See, let's see. I think they have to teach, they have to be teaching at the residence of the, of their own or of the student, so that's the definition. So it would conclude, like music teachers and things like that, where you, or tutoring, but would have to be at the teacher's home or at the student's home. So it's very small in nature, and those, those would now be exempt, but to the extent, you know, they, they don't have to pay the fee.
Okay, so it has to be at the, at a residential site?
Yes, either the teachers or the students.
Okay. And then the discussion that had happened in the memo that I had brought forward, and I think that was the January meeting that you referenced, the youth sports officials and all those, the exemption there, we're just going to keep it as a monetary exemption, not just a business or, or not a title of the business?
Right, they would need to pay the exemption fee on the three years plus one, and then on a prospective basis, as long as they meet the hardship exemption with respect to earning income, they wouldn't be responsible for paying the fee on a going-forward basis.
Okay, but if teachers make more than that, that, that amount, they're still exempt?
Yes, yes, they are.
Okay, and the difference between the two, one's teaching an art or a subject, and the other?
I'll have Wendy answer. So your question is regarding?
Just generally the difference. I mean, I know the difference, but looking at this as far as your approach, whether or not exempting those who coach or umpire youth sports. I know teachers provide a service, and whether it's tutoring for subjects or whether it's arts, you know, there's still a service for the youth sports side of it, and not that I'm suggesting that we should, but can you talk a little bit about your approach and the lens you were looking through to see whether or not we should look at the sports side of things as potential exemptions?
I'm trying to remember when this, when this exemption specifically came into effect for the teachers.
That's a lot to ask, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So I don't know that off the top of my, of my head, but I think that the whole nature behind creating the financial hardship category was so that we didn't have to keep establishing specific types of exemptions, that the financial hardship category would kind of be the umbrella for it. Oftentimes, we find in this category, a lot of the teachers, they, they also qualify for financial hardship, so they could take the exemption either way.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of those who do coaching, individual coaching or training for youth athletics, and they may be doing it at their house or that house of the student, or they may just go to the, the park down the street, and you know, to me, it's kind of still supporting our youth, and there's a benefit there, a public benefit, in my opinion, it may not be everybody's opinion. But again, I just wanted to get your feedback on that. So thank you, thank you for all the work you did. As was already mentioned, this was a complex issue, and I appreciate the time you put into it.
Councilor Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just trying to look up the uni-code provision to try to understand better the exemption on income solely, it's based on income from that activity, is that right? Or is it based on all income?
It's just based on the activity.
Okay, great. Wonderful. And question about the penalty for false reporting, because I understand we're really relying on sort of an honor system with regard to person's qualification for an exemption, and I can appreciate the staff direction, which is to, you know, reduce the staffing time necessary by eliminating all the paperwork. What are the penalties involved for somebody falsely filing for an exemption?
So if they, you're saying if they filed for an exemption and they actually earned income higher than?
Yeah.
Then they would be subject to the tax itself and all the penalties and interest that would have accrued. So, so if they weren't paying at all, and they should have been then paying $150 a year, then they would have to pay the penalties and interest for each year that they falsified.
Okay. But there's, there's no independent penalty for the filing of a false report, other than the fact they have to pay whatever they, whatever tax they owed plus, you know, late penalties? Is that right? I don't know if you're, it's not, the form isn't independently of perjury, is it? Oh, it is. There's that possibility. Okay, so now they're committing perjury. Okay, that's helpful. Well, thank you. I really support the staff direction. Thank you for moving this way. I hope this is an example for what we can do in other processes where we are unduly consuming a lot of staff time and, most importantly, energy in the community around really challenging efforts of compliance for people who are trying to do good things in the community. And all too often in our city, we, we do have a way of getting in the way, and this is a great path forward, and I hope we can employ this again.
I think that's it. Does somebody else have a comment? We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation on that motion. All in favor. Opposed, non-opposed, motion carries. Our next item would be three point four, adoption of a statement of policy and city council questions for prospective chief information officer for the IT department. We have a motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed, non-opposed, motion is approved. Item six point one, word of contract for the airport taxiway W extension DG project. We have a motion to approve. Councilor Rocha.
Anybody from the airport, I'm assuming Sykes, Mr. Sykes is here to speak on behalf of the airport for any questions? Thank you. So looking through the memo, and I hadn't got to it yet, so I'm going to go from memory. There was reference to having to inform the FAA about the expenditure for the dollars for the runway improvement and any delays, should we have, thank you. Can you talk a little bit about, not in a bad way, but the, the fact that we have this in front of us that doesn't allow us the time to take cancel action if we need to come back on a number of items, whether it was a bid protest, whether it was a, I don't know if it was a change order, I can't remember off the top of my head. But again, can you talk a little bit about the timing and why we don't have that flexibility and why we're awarding your authority?
I'm sure. David Sykes, Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
This funding does come with some kind of unique strings, if you will. In essence, we're getting 80% of the project funded by, by the federal government. In the process that we go through, in essence, they, they give a blanket approval, an overall approval, to move forward with the project and the program. They won't issue a final approval until we have bids in hand. Once we have bids in hand, we submit for basically a reapplication. They give a final approval for that and allow us to award the contract. That all needs to be done in a, in a certain amount of time, from the time when we open the bids to the time we actually award the contract. And that seems to come up every year, where we've kind of got that arranged around the summertime, and it's somewhere around the council break. In essence, every year, their funding comes into place around the Ju-, July 1st timeframe. So we kind of found ourselves in this position the last couple of years. So what we're seeking here is authorization to be able to proceed with that process. The authorization is up to $10 million. We're expecting the bids to come in closer to $6 million, so we, we believe we'll be within the right threshold, and we'll be in position to resolve any bid protest should they come up.
Bid protest, but also determination of the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and any decision to reject all bids and rebid the project, and so that you would have the authority to do, make all those decisions?
That's correct.
And then as far as, let's just say hypothetically, one of these happens, reporting to the council, any update, being $10 million project is a good-sized project, well, how would we hear about that if that was, is this an info memo process for you, or how do you do that?
We could do that. Certainly, if something were to come up, we could provide an info memo to the council reporting what actions we took. Just to give you a little bit more assurance, we've kind of done this process. I think this is the fifth time we've done it on the taxiways. We've also had to do it with some of the transportation projects, because sometimes they have similar constraints to them, but certainly a report out to the council if anything didn't come as planned would be quite appropriate.
So in all those instances, there hasn't been any of these issues that you've talked about?
I do believe.
It's all just off the top of your head, I understand.
Actually, I do believe on, not on one of the aviation, but on one of the transportation projects, maybe the summer before last, we did have a protest that the director resolved.
Okay. And then as far as the council getting the information on that, I mean, it could be a minor issue, and I wouldn't expect us to hear about every administrative action, but in a larger one, outside of what I just suggested, in an info memo, did you see another form that the council should be aware of this, or maybe as far as your concern, this is just a minor issue and it's really not, and I'm not suggesting we need to know about it, from your professional opinion, if you don't mind?
Well, no, typically, the council is involved with resolving all formal protests, and so this is somewhat unusual authority being granted to the director based on the circumstances of this funding. But typically, the council is involved with all protests, even on projects that are within my authority award, under a million, if there's a protest, we bring that protest to the council.
Okay, thanks, Helen. I think there was a motion already, but if I could ask some, I'm sorry, may I?
There was, but I don't, I forgot who got the motion, Councilor Constance. Did you have the motion on this? Let's see what the city clerk says. City clerk says Pete Constance got the first. All right.
I don't think I need to ask for a modification to the motion, but if I could ask the city manager, even the director of public works, if there is a significant issue here that they would let the council know, please. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So noted. We have a motion to approve. Councilor Rocha, did you have a comment on this? Okay. Question was answered. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed, non-opposed, that is approved. Item three point five was noticed to be last, we were there, but not before 2:30, so we're going to take a 20-minute recess to go out and work, work out on the exercise equipment, and we'll be back here at 2:30 to have the hearing on the regulation, or not earlier than 2:30, and that is item three point five, a recommendation to support the regulation of menthol and flavored tobacco products. We'll take that up now, and that's the last item of business. Councilor Chiu.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a public member here, which we'll let him to speak first.
Okay. We're, we do have people who wish to speak. We're going to take that as soon as I can get the cards. All right, Patsy Cortez, Giselle Moreno.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Patsy Cortez, and I'm a student at San Jose State University and a longtime resident of District 7. I was also part of the District 7 Youth Advisory Council, and I'm also part of the menthol-flavored tobacco prevention project. As a resident of San Jose, expressing my concern on how big tobacco industry purposely creates and markets attractive tobacco products to youth and young adults. The menthol flavoring obviously is added to cigarettes to facilitate the ease of progressing into a smoking lifestyle. Over the past few years, we've received support from numerous amounts of youth in the following districts, District 5, 7, 3, and 8, and that is through a youth, and they actually wrote their own letter of resolution, and they support this cause as well. And we've also gotten it from neighboring cities like Mopetis and also neighboring counties. Adopting this resolution will fall directly in line with the other initiatives San Jose has already passed, like tobacco retail licensing and smoke-free parks. So, just to put things in perspective, we had a letter picked up in District 7 this past Saturday, and these are what we picked up in front of the parking lot of the Seven Trees, the Seven Trees Community Center. As you can see, some of them are menthols, so that, to put things in perspective for you. So remember, preventing a life of hardship due to the repercussions of smoking is minimized, is done by minimizing access to these mentholated products, and we need to stop youth tobacco products that can promote nicotine addiction as well as prevent, and so we can prevent chronic illnesses like diseases and diabetes and cancer. So we are urging you to please adopt the resolution that will support the FDA in regulating these products, so thank you.
Giselle Moreno, and then Brendan V.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Giselle Moreno, and I'm from District 2. As a mom, my biggest concern is the tobacco industry, that they look so attractive to kids, they look like candy. I don't like them, and I would like you guys to support this cause. Thank you.
Brendan V., and then Victoria Borden.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Brendan Vu. I'm an SJSU student who grew up in District 5. I urge the council to move this important item that deals with youth and young adult starter products. As a former smoker, I struggle with nicotine dependency. Every day is a battle to fight the urge to smoke. I support any effort to help a younger person not pick up a cigarette. Please support the FDA's efforts to make sure tobacco products are not kid-friendly. It's a humane thing to do. Thank you.
Victoria Borden, and then Marcella Davison.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Victoria Borden, and I grew up in District 5, and I right now live in District 6. I'm currently serving as a community co-chair of the menthol-flavored tobacco prevention project, also known as the Don't Smoke Our Yum campaign. I'm here today to ask you to take a stand for the health of your constituents and adopt a resolution urging the Food and Drug Administration to better regulate youth starter products, specifically flavored and menthol-flavored tobacco products. I am very proud to be from one of the healthiest cities in our state, and I want us as a city to move forward and continue that, as well as promote responsible business practices. And I can safely assume that all of you are informed and aware of the health detriments and the unnecessarily fiscal healthcare costs that addiction to tobacco brings to our families and our city. Please support this important health issue and adopt this resolution. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Marcella, I'm sorry, I think you want to speak on open forum on another topic, so I'll wait a couple of minutes and I'll call you back, sorry. That concludes the public testimony on this item, the menthol-flavored tobacco products item. Councilor Chiu, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Carrad, and Campos for co-author the memo dated February 14th. Also like to thank Betsy Chawell for your memo and your sorrow study regarding to this issue. Definitely thank to my constituent and the public for bringing this issue to my attention. It was very well said by the public, so I would just really like to see that we can join the other cities in Santa Clara County in passing a resolution before May 31st, which coincides with the World Tobacco Free Day, a day that raises awareness about youth tobacco use prevention and treatment. So at this time, I would really like to make a motion to accept the memo from Councilmember Ashkara, Javier Campos, and myself, dated in February 14, 2013.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Councilor Constance.
Thank you. I'm going to preface my comments by saying I don't smoke and I don't like smoking. However, in an effort to be consistent, or constant, you may say, the, I feel very strongly that this council should only take positions and resolutions on items that specifically impact us as an organization. And we see a large number, a large number of examples of that when we go through our legislative updates through our individual committees and the Rules Committee and here on the council. If you read the memo that's put out, it refers to a number of state leaders that have taken positions, and I believe that's the way we should do that. Each of us should independently take positions on these issues that we feel are important to us. But we have, in the last couple of years particularly, gotten involved in so many resolutions that have absolutely nothing to do with the operations of our city. And I don't think it really follows the intent of our council policy on resolutions, and I think we should focus our business on those things that we have either direct control over or something that has a direct impact on us as an organizational, as an organizational from either an operational or fiscal perspective. So I won't be supporting it, because I have just seen this increased trend of trying to get the body as a whole involved in these things. I think it's better if people have interest, they should take it, and we should only do those things that affect us as an organization.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank all the young folks who came to speak. Obviously, your voice and your concerns are very important to us. I am very proud to support this resolution. I'm just happy in general to support any resolutions that encourage young people, especially young people who live in our city. for young people who live in our city, to be more healthy, especially when it comes to smoking tobacco products. So this is another step in the right direction for our city, and it really shows a youth that we care when they, when they speak up, so thank you.
Councilmember Camas.
Yeah, I also, want to caveat what I'm going to say with, I'm not a smoker, and I don't condone smoking, don't want to see my kids get addicted to cigarettes, or any other drugs, for that matter. I am, I'm very hesitant to ban, this is not a, this is not a resolution to regulate, it's a resolution to ban the products. I think that it, I think that kids are going to try whatever they want to try. I mean, I saw a report yesterday on television that kids were trying to swallow cinnamon to the extent that they were going to kill themselves from, from lack of oxygen and water. I've heard hand sinatizer being drank by kids. Yeah, absolutely, it was on television. Look it up. I kid you not. Not to mention alcohol, pills, the drug cabinets. And we're also in the process of, you know, expanding the legal use of marijuana. So I think that there's a lot of things here that the city council, I mean, that are going to be harmful to kids, and we just can't regulate everything. We cannot be regulating common sense and parenting. And I think, I think that's, that's up to us as, as parents. I think it belongs to the education process. We need to educate our kids not to do these harmful things to themselves, and then let them make the decisions on their own. So I won't be supporting the resolution, not because I don't, not because I believe in smoking, but it's because I believe in the fact that the kids are going to do what they're going to do. And to make something illegal is not necessarily going to have them stop trying it.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the great things about our democracy and the separations of the different levels of government is that all of our levels of government rely on the other levels of government to be able to give feedback as to what, what their constituents could use and what could be beneficial. And I don't think there's any doubt, I mean, there's decades and decades and decades of studies that have shown the detrimental effects of tobacco use. And there's even more recent studies that have found that during those times, that was flying under everybody's noses, is that the tobacco industry has been specifically targeting and advertising kids and youth. They have to, because most of their, their best customers don't live that long. They, you know, they die early. And so, one of the things that we should be doing, because we represent our constituents, is to be able to give feedback to the regulating agencies as to how we, how we best feel they could benefit our community. In this case, it's our city giving feedback to the federal government, saying, you know what, this is, this is a detriment in our community, this would help us a lot more in our community if you take action at the federal level. And so, you know, I think California has been one of the states in the forefront of being able to try to provide more healthy advertising campaigns, more healthy choices for our community. I believe Prop 99 at the end of the, of the eighties and the beginning of the nineties provided some of the first tobacco funding to go out to schools and teach kids the detriments of tobacco use. I actually used to be one of those counselors that would go out to one of the schools, to the schools and talk to kids about this. And guess what? It helped. You started seeing waves of kids in the nineties stopping to use tobacco. They were, and it seems like there was someone up there that was probably one of the messengers back then, but, but it's helpful. And I think that it's our responsibility as a, as a city to be able to provide all the tools that we can for, you know, for our folks out there to, to make good decisions. So, you know, I was very thankful that Councilmember Chu brought this and was very, very honored to be on that memo. Thank you.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to join with my colleagues in thanking the young people that have come here today to talk about this. It's a very important issue. I think that the difference about this is menthol and other flavored kinds of things added to cigarettes really, it appears to be targeting youth, and I think that's the concern. And I know that when young people start to smoke, and I remember being in school and seeing some of my peers at a very early age start to pick up cigarettes, and seeing them later in life having a really hard time quitting cigarettes. And I, I don't have the studies in front of me, but I believe that if you start really young, it's even more addictive, it's much more difficult to quit. And it's, it's been shown over and over again that nicotine's one of the most difficult substances to, to give up once you're addicted to it. It's a, I believe it's, it's similar to heroin, in fact, trying to, it's even more difficult, where I'm hearing. So it really is something we need to take seriously. The costs of it are enormous, and this council has weighed in over the years in terms of more regulation and, and more strict regulation of nicotine and preventing smoking in a variety of places. We're getting more and more stringent on that. So I think it is a direction that, that we've weighed in on and we're moving towards, so I'm supportive of weighing in on this and giving the FDA our opinion on it, and so I'm very supportive.
Councilmember Colra.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Chu and Campos, and I'm happy to join them in putting this memo forward. And it looks like we'll be doing it just in time to have the FDA receive the resolutions in June of this year. Want to thank everyone that's come out to speak, and a number of you have really been active, especially in terms of youth smoking cessation for, for many, many years, and so I appreciate your work on that. And, you know, we have a lot of rules, certainly, and there's a reason for that, and there's a reason why we have our laws, especially in regards to public health, and we have rules for nutrition standards, we have car seat rules, we have helmet laws. Yes, kids are going to do what they're going to do, but we also have to be adults and realize there are things that we can do to make our community safer for our youth, particularly when it comes to smoking. As Councilmember Herrera indicated, I have a lot of friends, I've actually never smoked before. I have a lot of friends that have smoked and become addicted, and almost without fail, they started smoking when they were younger, teens or even younger than that, when they first started smoking. And oftentimes, when they started smoking, it was from flavored tobacco that got them hooked, and that's, that's part of the plan, you know? Yes, there are regulations sometimes that go overboard and what have you, but in this case, all flavored cigarettes are banned but menthols. That wasn't for any other reason, but then this very wealthy industry, the tobacco industry, lobbied very hard to ensure that menthol was excluded, because they know how important a tool menthol is in order to get people hooked, especially at a young age, to tobacco. And this is an industry that for decades has had no problem lying, using their influence to, to get what they want, to ensure that they can continue to sell their products that kill so many people every year throughout the world. And so, when it comes to the idea of us only doing things that affect us, I mean, look, you know, we have to not just do things that affect us as an organization, but it affects our, affect our community, affect the people in our community. Sometimes you have jurisdiction directly over it, sometimes we don't, and we have the opportunity, like in the situation with the marriage equality matters for the Supreme Court, like with payday lending, we don't have control over all of it, but what we don't have control over, we can call on our state legislators to do what they can. Our smoking ordinance is we have some control over smoking, we don't have the control to get tobacco companies to stop using menthol. So in this case, we're doing what I believe is our duty on behalf of our residents, and letting the tobacco industry, letting the FDA know that we want the tobacco industry to act in a more responsible fashion. So, and, and we have put forward resolutions, and oftentimes unanimously or by a large majority, on items that we don't directly oversee, and I don't think we should pick and choose as to which ones we should decide we should chime in on. And unless we're against banning anything and everything, then these are discussions that we should have. And so I really appreciate Councilmember Chu and Campos for bringing me along on this one, because it is certainly something that, along with the secondhand smoke ordinance that we were able to get passed, I think it's, it's part and parcel with that movement to make our community a healthier place for all of our families.
I think that includes the debate, the comments. We have a motion to approve the resolution based on the memorandum. On that motion, all in favor. Opposed. Count one, two, three opposed. Oliverio, Colra, Oliverio Constant and Camas. Just thought I'd see if you were paying attention there. I can count votes different kinds of ways. So, the motion passes on an eight-three vote. Last item we have on our agenda is the open forum. I have one request to speak. Marcella Davis.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Marcella Davis Namiles, and I'm executive producer of an event that you know as Viva Fest, otherwise known as the San Jose Mexican Heritage y mariachi festival. And I am here as a result of conversations that my colleagues and I have been having relative to the budget process, and I'm sure that some of my colleagues in the arts community will be reaching out to each of you individually to have their own thoughts. But as a result of some of these conversations that we've been having as a group, I'm sure you're going to be getting information from Team San Jose and others about the ROI of the arts sector, how many people we serve, how we contribute to the tax base, et cetera. And so what I would like to just speak about very, very briefly is, is to ask everyone here, I suppose, a question that I, I saw posed by the artist David Byrne, who you probably know from Talking Heads. He was interviewed in Wired magazine recently, and he asked a question. And he said, "What do we need music to do? How do we visit the land in our head and the place in our heart that music takes us to? Can I get a round-trip ticket?" And so that is a really wonderful way of posing a question to all of us, which is to consider the intangible benefit that the arts community provide to, to all of us as we consider support for the arts community in the budget process. And we do a lot of work in music education. I'll just give you a couple of examples of how I feel that intangible impact works to serve our community. All of the revenue, surplus revenue that we earn at Viva Fest goes back to music education in the schools, three schools in particular, Horace Mann, Burnett, and San Jose High. And we know through the data that we're getting from San Jose—
Sorry, your time is up.
—that it makes a difference. So thanks very much.
Susan Green.
Mayor, council members, city manager, I too am here today to urge you to consider art support as you're working on the budget for this next year. We're very glad for the city's support and partnership as we in the arts community try to sustain the vitality of downtown, along with Team San Jose. And I want you to know that we are all recovering from the recession, but it is exceedingly slow. We're still seeing drops in corporate support in the city funding, and the TOT grants pool means all the more to all the arts organizations downtown. With this year's increase in TOT revenues, I encourage you to increase the grants pool as much as possible, and to similarly increase support to Team San Jose and the hoteliers, who are our partners in trying to make vitality happen downtown. We all creatively leverage the city dollars. The museum, for example, serves over ninety-five thousand people a year, including thirty-seven thousand schoolkids from the greater San Jose area. But we also draw from Gilroy, Santa Cruz, Half Moon Bay, and Fremont. The economic impact of this organization alone is eight-point-five million dollars. But it's really the attraction of audiences from beyond greater San Jose that also means so much to the community. Eighty-four percent of our contributed revenue comes from outside the city, and that's the leverage that your dollars provide for us. Fifty-five percent of the attendees come to San Jose to participate in the museum, and similar numbers are found in all of the arts organizations downtown. Our audiences, we're really proud to say, come more often, they're younger, and they're more diverse than most museum audiences around the country. That's the kind of arts participation that you make happen in the city. We want to be the capital of Silicon Valley, and the arts are a big attractor of investment, of spending, and of traffic. We did a audience research poll about a year and a half ago. It's the first thorough research we've done of that kind in the museum's history, and we found three top reasons people visit. They come to see interesting things, they come to be inspired, and they come to stimulate their creative mind. And I think that last sentence—
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on the open forum? Andrew Bales.
Thank you, and thank you for recognizing me, because I, you obviously had a little faster day today than I'd been warned. You know, the last several years have been really tough. Everybody knows that. That's not news. And I think you'll, I hope you'll respect that the arts have tried not to be pounding on your doors in those tough times. But there's been a lot of erosion in the TOT support and the nature of way things are paid for and how things have happened, and, and I think as you look to where you're going now, I'd just like to weigh in with others and other colleagues that we're a very good investment for the city. Nobody gets more than three to five percent of their budget, which means every dollar you put out there is coming back twenty-fold or more. We do a lot of services here and for a lot of levels, from kids all the way through, and we just want you to remember the arts and not forget that by not pounding on your door often, we, we still are here and we're still very much a part of the community. And thank you all.
That concludes the open forum, includes our meeting. We're adjourned.